Alright, it's about a clock. We're going to call our commission board to work and welcome everyone. This is kind of what pleads allegiance to this county leaders and prayer of all. So Luke, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for having us here tonight. Father, I pray that you will just guide us to make God with decision. And Father, that you'll just take us forward as the weeks comes, Father, that we'll be able to do what you would have us to do. Father, I pray that you will be with our nation right now, Father, that we need you more than ever. To speak with us as we lead tonight, to guide us home safely. Father, that with the listeners that we have tonight, and take them off safely in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Looking at the consent agenda before we start going further. Eight and nine, I want to hit three emissions. So Luke, we'll be adding new to new business. Number eight is concerning an annual appropriation in the form of an expansion reimbursement to the city of Hefflin for economic development services. That will be made in a resolution presented for adoption, but I don't think we'd be to advertise for the position of an economic developer. Also, we're asking that a 911 resolution be added, and I will ask, you can determine to read that resolution so that you can decide whether or not we're going to add that to see.
Whereas the Cleveland County Communication District has resolved to allow an increase in the 911 budget from the amount of $4,800 to allow for the upgraded plans for a 911 backup center to be constructed at the Hefflin Fire Station, primarily utilizing grant funding secured by the Cleveland County Emergency Manager. And whereas the additional funding is appropriate and necessary for the construction of the 911 backup center. Now therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to approve Cleveland County Communications District's request and directs the administrator to adjust the line amount accordingly.
Any discussion on adding that? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Hill was asked to also add a resolution to take $3,500 from his discretionary account to help Pleasant Grove Elementary School build a playground, or help with a playground?
Help with a playground.
He's asked that that be added to each agenda. Got a motion?
Yeah.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of, did you have a discussion?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor of adding and say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So have A, B, C, and D, new business?
Is that law? Do you have some feeling?
No, not at the time till we get home.
Okay.
Resolution is right there. So I asked Mr. John Kent, you live on County Road 665, was asked to come and speak to the commission. I've talked to Mr. Kent on the phone, and he is realizing that he has a time limit here to speak to you between three to five minutes. And Mr. Kent, if you want to come up and address the question.
Alright, I didn't know I was going to get five minutes. So I had to figure out how much property tax I'd pay. But you know, this three minutes was going to come from $666 a minute. Well, you sell a lawnmower blades, it's going to be about $150. Fixing the master fence, thank God my neighbor fixed it after they came to swing a lawn, cut my master fence. My wife informed him that the cut, they don't hurt, they don't damage anything. I've been picking up limbs from my yard for over a week now. Not small limbs, this thing about three to four inches in diameter. Probably about two and a half long. I hit one of my lawn blades that day, broke the bloody. You know, that's not my fault. In my world, I have to pay for my mistakes. So, I would give the estimate, and like the guy around there, for getting the lawnmower fixed. You know, years ago, when you first got the swing yard, they were cutting the road right by my house, and they were dodging the potholes. That's nice and wonderful, you cut the side of the road. But when the road has potholes in it, that will honest to God swallow the cart. Your priorities are a little bit off. You know, I'm tired of having to spend my money to fix stuff that currently has broken. And when you tell somebody, oh, you broke this, well, it's not our fault. You were doing it, it's your fault. I mean, I may be a simpleton when it comes to that, but if you break something, it's your fault. And when I tried to call my commissioner, he didn't even get my road number right. Very problematic. You know, I said 665. Somehow 665 and 666 come up blocked in my life. So, I'm going to ask you to present a receipt for my fence and my lawnmower blades. Yes, no, maybe?
Would that be filed on our insurance, something like that?
Um, I'm insured. I mean, he could always present a receipt, anything can be presented. The commission would have to vote and look at it.
I hope that I have to do that, I have it tomorrow next minute. Uh, another thing, when you call and try to get in touch with somebody in the county, you know, that is the most common mess. No, I have four messages for our county engineer, none of which I will return. So, you know, you're not, you're here to run the county. You run it like a business, not like a daycare. If a kid comes out and breaks a toilet, big deal. If you come out and break my master fence, we got problems. Especially when your people tell me that it's not their responsibility, they didn't do it, and I'm wired to pay the fees myself. Well, I took my three minutes, we're good, I'll bring your bill.
Thank you, John. Mr. Ogle decided that since you presented him that, and you answered a question about the photo and you were checking that, I think he decided to go along.
So, can I ask one more question about that?
Yes.
Who, who, who gave commission to then go plan the building? I don't understand how that, they took the stuff out of it?
I mean, that's news to me too. I mean, he asked me about that last week, I suppose Fred, Fred told me that Mr. Benfield had photos.
Okay.
Cause I just called Fred about it, cause I needed, he probably, he had key. John, you hear anything? Yes, sir.
Emily, on the 911, about seven months ago, we made a part-time, full-time employer. Were you looking back and seeing when that happened, so, and text all commissioners on when that happened?
On the deck, and that and hired the person?
Well, that we did. We just, we're not for sure what, when it was, because I think it might be in the budget to make another full-time position. I just want to know. I thought we talked about it, I didn't remember that we made it full-time this year. I thought we was going way through the budget.
Okay.
It might have been, I was thinking with y'all, 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 and come back on the budget. You might thought, that's what I, I think we're in all of it.
No, uh.
She will know.
No bid opens, awards and presentations. Mr. Hendricks did present a deed, and certainly we voted in the past to give the property, the whole wealth school, to, what was it called, the, the, the community, the friends and stuff like that. I can, it was.
I saw a Bible once, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I know we haven't brought it up one time, we get to make sure that that building's no longer our insurance. You brought it up, I think, last meeting.
Now, public consent agenda, there were two issues that were not initial, eight and nine, but the rest of it was all for initial, all for commission initial.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Hendricks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, so. New business A. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has been making an annual appropriation in the form of an expansion reimbursement to the city of Hefflin for economic development services. Whereas the commission now wishes to employ an economic developer for the county. Whereas the employer will then work under the direction of a board representing the districts of the county. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission hereby establishes the Cleveland County Economic Development Board. You don't entertain a motion?
Start.
You have, you have a motion, and you have a second. Discussion, Mr. Hendricks?
Uh, I mean, I'm all for this, start with the name, forgive me, but it. Do we really want this employee to work under the board? Or do we want this employee to be a county employee and work for us? I think the Hefflin board is set up for, they work for the city, not the board. I think we just need to clarify what this is.
Only, only, wait, I see.
Yeah, yeah, I'm only talking.
The only thing I can see about it is, is we look to it, and I looked at several counties. And, and, and it's almost like we really need to sit down with an economic developer that has time to spend time to put this together correctly, that's the reason why I wanted it. But I think the, the objective is that if we hire that employee, that we will make them understand that they will follow the direction of the board. But at the same time, it's no different than, I guess, you know, when we had a 911 board, they, them employees still fell and got paid by the county. I think once we get our board established, we really want the board, if everybody participates in that, to take the direction, because I'm hoping that, you know, every entity in the county will be putting money towards that. So as the board gets created, but I think that that employee, it's no different than 911, when that board fell apart and they said, hey, we no longer want it, we still need that economic developer. See what I'm saying? So.
I mean, I, I totally agree with you. But if you start off in the job of somebody, they're going to have questions. And here's the question, I'll just come up with here. You know, are they going to be classified, unclassified? Are they going to have a vehicle, they're going to get paid mileage? Are they going to have a contract? I mean, you can't hire somebody that nails all this stuff down, in my opinion. I mean, I'm all for hiring somebody, but I think we need to clarify.
I was going to ask, can we ask, ask for your input on that?
My concern, Nathan, with this specific resolution as it is, the resolution hereby establishes the Cleveland County Economic Development Board, but we don't have any structure, any bylaws, any, anything establishing that board. And I understand what Commissioner Owen is saying, that he wants to get somebody on board to help with putting that together. But this resolution, to me, is putting the cart before the horse. I believe we need to have a job description for the second option.
We did have a job description, but it's, in my opinion, again, it's sort of vague.
I mean, I, I don't have a vote, obviously. But my recommendation would be that the commission tasks its HR manager and/or HR manager and attorney to create a job description for advertising. So you may want to just go with the new business B, amend it a little bit to create a job description and advertise it as a county employee. And from that point, you can move forward once you get that advice on the board. I wouldn't set up a board, do you know what I was going to do?
Right. I look at the position as, as a department, let's just say a department, that will help create the board, bring everybody together, you know, and form the board. That works for the commission, you know? Working for the commission, coming up with the board, helping select members, suggesting members, and get the bylaws, you know?
And that works, it will be an advisory board, it could be, you know, business persons from the community that your economic developer is recommending. But ultimately, I think the best structure, if it's going to be an employee, it'd be a county employee. Unlike the situation we have with 911, where all of a sudden, they realize they're a separate entity, and they're responsible for their own insurance and everything else, and they didn't have the assets to do that. Here, if you have this county employee, once you get them on board, then you can work with them towards establishing a board. But I think the best course of action is get the description, get it nailed down, the questions that Commissioner Hendricks raised, so that that advertisement can have the facts and the information. Get somebody on board, and then order them to develop everything else for that.
And one of the things of it is, a lot of our policies takes care of some stuff with handling as a county employee. The only thing I have to talk about is looking at some of the vehicles that are sitting around, where I got the, the economic developer going to Ramberg, Hollis, wherever they're going. I want to be able to have, be able to use a vehicle here, or if some, if some of these vehicles come rolling through, that we, or just continue, we can have a place in a situation where they'd be able to have it. Because the economic developer, likely going to Birmingham, likely going to Anniston, to all those meetings. So I don't want to get too deep into paying for mileage, where we might can get a used car from one of the parts that was being handed down or something, is all.
And we do, if we do, a county employee, I mean, the black car out there could possibly be shared.
Right.
But if, if we're going to make it a county employee, and like, like you said, a department, hey, is, what's the purpose of a board?
Only if you wanted to have the business person input, make it sort of an advisory board, rather than a more authority to allocate this thing.
Second, sir?
Uh, the reason, you know, we got into this because we didn't have anything. And we went with the city of Hefflin, and the city of Hefflin, I think, did a great job. Like, you look at the money that we put into it, we've got keeping some money that, that they have businesses they've opened. What I've always wanted, ever since I got elected, is to be able to have a path, not just by commission, but have paths, a path by individuals, where I got somebody in Ramberg, I got somebody in Pruppers, and anywhere else in the county, where they come and they feel like they have part of it. If everybody's just in one of the locations, and we're just sitting here, well, even though you're here, they look at it like, well, they don't, it, it sort of gets the municipalities involved by having somebody to come in and listen to ideals, and listen to other things that they might be able to be entitled to, or reach out to to help them create economic development. But if we just keep it confined to this fruit right here, I don't think it's going to do the municipalities as much justice, however that works out. But that's what I've always wanted, is a bridge to the county seat, where everybody will know what's going on, and see if they've got opportunities for them to be able to get something out of it.
I think your change is, is right on, I think. I just wondered if this could be amended, would, would the, this motion be amended?
I have a problem.
Change the other meeting.
Wow, this, this resolution's the one establishing the board, which I would advise we don't do until we have that employee.
I agree.
In-house to work with them to do it. So this resolution could either, it's already about a second, so it could be voted down, and then you could go forward with new business B to establish the job description and advertise and hire an economic developer.
Yeah, right? Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not opposed to anything you say, but I just blame that was happening here was questions I think is going to come up in the future, and we sort of need to smooth it all out now, instead of waiting for their neighbors to walk in.
So, are y'all ready to vote?
You've already got a job description. I think the, the job descriptions are the, you've already, in a draft, I wanna, it's maybe legalized.
I think it's good.
Mr. Allen?
Uh, I don't have a problem with having our attorneys look over that job description. So I would like for it to be referred to him, and if he sees any kind of few changes he might want to make for it, I think that would be the only thing we would need. And then that employee would be under the clause of seizure handbook that the county commission's already established for all of us in Hollis.
Alright, let's go back to this motion, A. You heard that you could vote down, and if you just, or you could vote for it, so. Y'all ready for both?
So, right, okay, yes, sir. So right now, we're at the point of, of making a change on this resolution.
The attorney's recommending a micro change, just recommend that we don't, that it'd be better if it's not passing. You can vote it down, vote it up, so that we can, when they're up.
So all in favor of this motion, say aye. Those not in favor, say nay.
No, no, no.
Okay, it does not pass. Alright, now, we're looking at nine, alright? Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has agreed to establish a county economic development board, whereas the Cleveland County Commission wishes to hire an employee as an economic developer. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to advertise for the position of economic developer. We got a motion, and we have a second.
We recommend an amendment to this motion as well.
Okay. Are you open?
I'm open for the amendment.
My recommendation is that we drop the first sentence that was just read, remove it completely, because you have not agreed with the county economic developer. Start with the second sentence, it says, whereas the Cleveland County Commission wishes to hire an employee as an economic developer, and, whereas the commission tasks the HR director and county attorney to finalize the job description for advertising such position. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to advertise for the position of economic developer.
Are you good at that, Nick?
I'm good.
You're good, good?
I'm good.
Okay. Any discussion nay? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
You good, Ms. Cobb, right? Motion carries. Ms. Cobb, you gave me this. Aye.
You have to get a bird up, bull. Dear, you can hear her well, she just can't hear us.
Alright. So that takes care of that. Now, we're looking at the 911, you heard that resolution earlier, is everybody good with the way he read that?
I'm good.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then the next was the, the motion for discretionary, coming out of Mr. Hill's discretionary account for playground at Pleasant Grove Elementary School for the amount of $3,500. Make a motion, you have a second?
I'll start.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, just to make sure I'm hearing my, motion carries.
They wouldn't beat you out here, you're nice.
Maybe so. Y'all all say it, so county is.
It's like, yeah.
So that, that takes care of the voting. Moving on to the county attorney of this.
Okay. I have given you all a tentative schedule for budget meetings. As I mentioned in my email, the meeting that's on September the 3rd, I tend to schedule it for that day, which is a Tuesday, because Monday we normally have our work session, that is accounting holiday, so may want to think about moving your meeting to that day. And if you want to move it to a different day, we'll also move to budget meeting as well. That was just something I came across when I was kind of putting the schedule together. I will be in the next few days or so, sending out to all the department heads basically spreadsheets that they can put any kind of requested items from budget, and then I'll start meeting with them, and I've given them the deadline, July 29th, to get back with me, any, anything that they're requesting. They will not have to do anything with, of course, with salary items or with insurance. I'll make sure they have those numbers as they get their spreadsheets, so that they won't have to worry about that part, or you can worry about the other items on there. Other than that, the only thing I have is I will be out of the office on Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday this week. There is an ACCA being in, a class in practical that I'm taking. It is a county administrator and attorney debate, and our county attorney has said that it was a scheduled conflict, so I'm going to bring back any information that I can gather from that meeting, I think, as well. But of course, I will be in contact and, and be talking every night, yeah, that we'll be working on there, so.
So, oh, you have a draft, so we will get a draft on the 16th, then?
Yes, on August 16th, that's the week before you go, and you're going to go to your class, which is what we took with you. And I'll have, I should have all that put together, press is already helping me predict our year-end numbers. And we've got pretty much everything done so far, the revenues for June, but of course, July revenues are actually due, you know, even if we're saying July, or even just June revenue. So we're kind of waiting on some numbers to kind of finish that out, and get our year-end numbers put together. And that's when we jump off and get our budget numbers, or our anticipated revenues and expenses to be there.
Alright, any questions?
Uh, did you get my email about that axe that goes up on, the thing where the nails are sticking up? That's where you go up the ladder, and it's right behind you. When we went up on the roof before I started today, that, there's about six or seven nails that just stick straight up right behind. If anybody puts their elbow, arm, it's going to be bad, plus up on the ladder like that.
It's already been corrected, it got corrected.
Which side, I wouldn't have to.
On the, on the good side, that we have done for the insurance? When you get right there to the top, the board right behind you has got nails sticking up like that all over across that board.
We actually went up on the surface of the carpet.
So y'all went through the little hole? You shouldn't have went through that east side, that thing is sweet. I wouldn't mind having that put on the other side.
You just like. Anyway, we did it, so.
That's great.
To, I guess, your turn, you have.
No.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
We talked about employee handbooks, but we never did actually task anybody to do it. Is that something we want to wait till next month, or something we could add this month? Or maybe pass our attorney and HR to go through?
You had one item that was discussed, and there was a concern about another area that you were going to bring up in the next work session.
We only tasked you to do the one item, and not look at the whole book.
Right, and then you said you were going to talk about an additional one to bring up and do it at the same time, so.
Would you read that? I don't know if you're supposed to get your reading.
I've read it.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, Mr., did you see anything, if you didn't see, it may be childish.
Uh, I'm not, I mean, I.
Where does the other attorney's work project go on that? But I would kind of like that, but I think there's.
Well, I mean, that's sort of what I'm.
That's what I, that's what I'm hearing.
What I'm suggesting is our attorney and our HR lady get together and, and highlight what they don't like and pencil in what they do like and we can look at it, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Could be a reassurance.
Do, do y'all need a, a resolution task to do that?
Well, if we put a whole book together and you go back and you look at it, even if you're the one that did the whole book, you go back and look at something and say. You know, but you're looking at a big volume where now that we've had all the employees and everybody looking at it, that might say, hey, y'all ready to, you know, there might be some other words that come here or there and it might, y'all look at some stuff.
Any other questions? So, y'all can, okay. Old business?
Yes, sir, I got another question, I see. What, what about the, uh, did y'all get the contract for rendering on inmates?
It's right here, uh, actually, we're in, we're applying to sign it and it does not, but, yeah, I did, we did that out.
I think, I think.
Yes, sir.
With our new financial officer, are you, is he also gonna be taking some of the administrative classes and, and that, you know, start getting in and the lead on?
I, I think it's a good idea for him to do that, um, at his class, just a few basic ones that I think that we did, um. Right now, this time of year, um, it's kind of failed to just, a one or two classes left, there's not a lot left this time of year because everybody's only at the budget season. And they don't, they just don't really look thin, a lot of people won't, won't come to the classes. Um, but certainly, yes, I think it'd be a good idea for him to attend some of the classes. Absolutely, and, um, I mean, he's doing a, a great job catching on, um, you know, jumping in. Kind of doing the right direction, he jumps in, takes off with it, so, yes, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Hello. We talked about in the work session too about prior planning, are all of you, was that updated or not?
Yes, sir, um, we're making strides and I can say that with confidence now, um, we're going back, clearing up old items and, and getting things where, um, we have really good confidence that when we put the financials together, that we've had everything in place and. I know that sounds like a, a simple explanation and it is, but we are basically going back and I, there was a time where I didn't know how to clear up things that had happened. Or mistakes that were made or transfers that were not cleared through the right account and we're correcting all those items now and we're, we're getting replaced, we've got a lot of it, a lot of it cleared up. And we're just down to the knee now and getting everything. And once I have those numbers exactly right at the date, um, and we are working and taking on that, he's going back, finding out anything that doesn't look right. And then I can look through it and make corrections once I find out why it doesn't look right and then we'll get Melissa and let her take off with it from there.
Okay.
Right. Yes, sir. I guess.
Uh, so, uh, that's what I was fixing to go through and then you, you brought that up. Uh, when Melissa comes in, to be sure, I'd like for all three of y'all to sit down and, and, and make sure that everybody's getting all the education and, and experience on how, you know, we're. She's been doing it so long, it's just like, huh, it's just, it's, it's, it's just in her head. And, 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 and in her head, some stuff that you, and especially might need to, to have, you know, have to explain to you a little bit better, because she's been doing it so long, it's just, she thinks, sometimes people that knows how to do stuff like that will just know how to, no, it just, it's just, but you shouldn't, you don't know that, so I just want to make sure that when you sit down with her, that we understand that we're working on a goal, that we're gonna be doing all this in the house. Okay?
Couple of time frame, you still with the lady, what, October?
I'm, I'm hoping so, I'm hoping, you know, it's, it just depends on how smoothly budgets go. I really think that at the point we are at right now, I think we'll have all these accounts cleared up this, within a month. I don't see any reason why we couldn't as much as work it cleared up already. It's, it's, it's a system, we'll go through a whole set of reconciliations for, for our bank account and pull out the, the actual legal issues that are going on. Things that are hanging out, like outstanding items and things like that and mixing those with me, then I'll go back and research those items and make journal entries, frequent keepers with journal, we're back and forth getting this done. We've got a system already worked out where we're getting this cleared up, so I don't, I don't, it's just make any reason why we couldn't have those all cleared up within the next month and then we could clear it for Melissa, so.
Yeah, yeah, one more question, while you're, while you're doing a lot of that work, uh, instead of doing a lot of work, just say, hey, this is what we're doing. Just to make sure that, she says, well, make sure you're doing it, we don't want to have a bunch of stuff hanging out there, you know, y'all spend all these hours doing that and then we get to the end of it, she says, well. I'm just saying.
And we do.
Yeah, have to redo.
I, I got you.
Okay.
But this, these are, these are items like, you know, we'll say something like sometimes they're the, just like said, the one clearing account is used, because we want to use accounts that go between enter the apartment or transfer and things like. It's those kinds of things and you can say that they're hanging out there, things that shouldn't be about and those things that shouldn't be cleared out. So those are the kind of things we're going back and, like in spreadsheets, to see what items are still hanging out and making the entries to do that. He's helping to like specifically identify those items and then I'm actually being researched because I have more familiarity with how the accounts work. And making the journal entries that he keeps the journal entries in, the post, and then finishes the reconciliations out with the company reconciliations, so. I mean, it, it really seems simple, but it is, it makes a world of difference to have somebody to kind of, if we're in the back and back and forth, you've got two sets of eyes working on it and hanging and knocked out, so.
And this will be twenty-two and, and twenty-three, or should we?
We're working on both at the same time, we really are, we're not just, we're not just working on one, we're definitely working on both and twenty-three's not that bad, twenty-three's got a few things, but there's always gonna be a few things that, you know, just getting quite, quite a few lucky thought. Corrected, right, but twenty-two's gonna be worse, but we are very close to having both twenty-two and twenty-three.
So, so y'all actually got to a twelve-month period, so he's working on a month at a time, going through, clearing up that month and going for the next month, or he's just having to go across?
We're doing that count at a time, we're doing a whole account, going through and making sure everything's cleared out by the end of FY twenty-two, and that, that, we're trying to make sure that there's not anything that's outstanding at the end of September of any year that didn't clear up in October, it is just that simple, I mean, it really is that simple, just finding anything, whether it be a journal entry, whether it be a deposit that was off a few cents or, you know, just because of key entries.
So, a lot of times, like when, uh, Ms. Brown was here or when other ministers were here, she was talking about closing out the year. So that is when, uh, and I think that's where just sometimes the audit maybe moves along faster, is once you get your budget, because your budget's done, then you're having to close out the end of the year, then when you're closing out the end of the year is when you're really in a way getting that, uh, all those accounts set up, but then you know what, the end of the year and everything's final, then you start closing out each account. And, and I'm just saying, once you, now that you got, you got it rolling, as you, as twenty-three, it's already passed, so.
And closing out the end of the year is a, kind of a complicated, um, item, because part of closing out your year in is any of the pools that are coming in and we get lots of revenues in October, most of the revenues that we get in October are actually September revenues and we still have to approve for that. And then, of course, our expenses, they're, I mean, sometimes it's months, but really all the way up until December, we're expecting still to.
Yeah, and of course, we said sometimes, it's sometimes it don't close out until.
Right. Till the, till the calendar year, pretty much, yeah. And, you know, occasionally things come out, you're, you're, somebody will be on that, but for the most part, we have pretty hard and fast numbers by December.
Okay.
Alright.
Yes, another thing we talked about at the work session was changing our net, uh, uh, August, not taking May to the twenty-sixth, we have to do anything other than this. So we're gonna change it, because that, I think, is a week of the twenty-sixth again.
Um.
We talked about that. I'd say that advertised, right? If you'll help me, we're gonna sabotage, we're gonna move that.
Can you move it, did, can we move it back to that Friday or Thursday?
It'll later.
Can we do that, Jess?
I think that's the cost of this, is that.
As long as it's.
No, you just give us more time to, you know, to go from our notes, we can, I don't want to do that.
So you're trying to move it back or you're telling us to move it forward?
Move it, that's all, we're, we're, I see.
Okay, that's fine.
Alright, so I'll advertise, between me and Lisa, we'll have, get it advertised that the twenty-sixth, moving the meeting to the twenty-sixth.
Do you want to do anything about September as well, because, I mean, I know it's, I know it's out, but with that, we, we know that we want to change that meeting that's supposed to be on either the work session.
I like it already, it's a good cause and holiday, it goes to the next day now, geez, geez, everybody give it that.
I just, before I sent this out to all the department heads to get them on board, I didn't, I didn't want to send it out if I could change it.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
So, we're gonna move, um, to the twenty-sixth, right? And August, so have a work session on the first Monday and then that following work session on September, the mid to Tuesday.
They, they have an attorney's suite.
Yes, sir.
One more thing, uh, Sweet Grown Alabama is coming to get warrants and they, I think they've invited all of us, they're gonna make sure everybody's RSVP'd. I think it'd be a good thing for all of us to show up.
I bet you that.
Twenty-fifth to, it's Thursday night.
Okay, that's good.
It's supposed to RSVP, that you're coming, I guess, I guess you'll have an appointment or whatever.
Uh. Anything else? I'll enter, oh, I apologize, Ms. Corr, I let you out tonight.
It's okay, I just had something real, real quick, and I, I talked with two commissioners earlier today.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, about, uh, possible elevator, uh, in the courthouse. Uh, I went to a grant writing class last week and they say that this, because of the Americans with Disabilities Act, that it should be an easy grant to, to get approved. I think, uh, Commissioner Hendricks told me this afternoon, y'all have a grant writer in place and, and it might be time to reach out to them to see if there's something available out there. I know that we'll probably have to have some people involved that know stuff about elevators and, and, and that good stuff, but it was a logistical nightmare um, to get the people up the stairs for that, uh, community choir that came, that place was packed, jam-packed up there in the courtroom and it was an amazing event. But we learned real quick that that lift chair is very, very slow and someone in a wheelchair, yeah, someone in a wheelchair, someone else has to carry a wheelchair. And I know that probably the court, the, uh, sheriff has probably saw that in the court system up there and, and it's maybe time for us to do something a little different. I know that it's a nineteen oh five building, but I know that there can be adjustments for that and, and so that historical side with the, with the ADA side, there, there possibly is some kind of fix there, but I just wanted to mention that.
Now, you, you go ready.
I'll do good.
Sean Merle mentioned that, if you're, see, ask Cleveland, or do something similar, so you might say they combined, help with that.
Thank you, Emma.
Two, another question, did you speak with, uh, Senator Price concerning, uh?
He and I talked Sunday, he's been gone and we, we're gonna talk again.
Okay.
We've talked about it, there's, there's a law or two to it. I did it like that, we talked to him Sunday, we'll just go back.
Adam Dachner brought at this point, of course, I don't believe, not here, the city, about the bridge on ninety-four. He said there's a big history there that he wonders if, the historical, there are some historical grants, that he wonders if that can be possibly looked at saving that bridge as it is. So I don't know, he can mention that, he said he's done our research on it, he likes, she likes history and I'm just gonna point that out.
I would like Peter Adams to come and tell us what he's found out about the bridge.
Okay.
It's, you know, when we were going to, I mean, try to replace it, um, you know, it's already at one point five now, it's up to two point eight million dollars to replace it. And we spent about eighty-seven thousand on the design work, but my understanding, once we did not put it in place, we go back to the original structure.
Well, there, you got two issues, if you get federal money, I mean, stay, it has to be too much, like it is to one. The, uh, the second issue is, oh, if it, if it did go to a historical situation, I don't know how that would work, but that goes back to an old railroad and, uh, that's what he's discovering, it was back to eighteen eighty-three. That was a railroad.
Well, now, the other bridge is the railroad bridge. The other bridge, they're, they're using nail.
Oh, no, this is one that's down.
Yeah, that's been cut off.
Because the other one's also a railroad bridge.
Very possible, I think all of that road was at one time a railroad. And he, he found the deal, because he does a lot of abstract work.
I would love to have it open.
Yeah.
Tourism in that area, you know, it's a beautiful spot. Alright.
Our man, yes, honey.
Something, well, Lee's not here tonight, but I just want the commission to be aware, that the title three money that we get, you know, is supposed to go, it's supposed to be huge torch, uh, uh, in the federal areas and that's, please, I have, uh, two areas that's in the federal and one of them is the Cullman Lake Road that, uh, that needs to repair, I think Roger, you have one also, but not Cullman Lake Road, so that title three money that we've been, that's been going just into, uh, Lee's fund. I want him to be aware of that, when budget season comes, that that title three money is being used for that Cullman Lake Road. I see it is federal.
Over at the jail, did we look at the gas bill and see a, a cut in that gas bill, you know, we installed it through hot water years?
No, I'm sorry, I haven't looked into that yet.
Okay, and also, we was looking at getting the book on the taxes, uh, I mean, not on taxes, not, not on the taxes, but on the, uh, license, business license.
Yeah, that's our resolution.
I thought, I forgot, I talked with, uh, Senator Price about that too. And, and he talked a little bit, he's gonna go next week, but he said some of them licenses are done by legislation and he said that what we're not gonna do is, is similar to what probably Frueberg did, where they do across the board. If you do across the board, because like I was telling you about one, it's like five dollars for junkyard license. And, because he said, we're making you do a percentage, and I said, well, five, I mean, it ain't worth us, fooling, but if we're gonna, what's the percent of five, I can't, now we're gonna turn it to ten dollar. But he said, well, what we might wanna do, once you get them all and look at them all and see how they're structured and how they breathe, that it might be across the board. And so, but he's gonna be, he's supposed to be back in Montgomery this week, he's on some, one of those committees and he told me he'll get with me Monday on that, so. Whatever we get to that, I just wanted to go ahead and give it to the word in his ear that we're thinking about that.
The money, the money she's talking about, I see the, this money is.
Dollar four. Hundred, hundred, it, it keeps going down, you know, it started out at two hundred, it's like a hundred and twenty, I think, I'm not, I'm not absolutely sure. I'm, I'm forgetting, you know, but it's a, it was, you know, it was used, when I approached the federal side about theirs, you know, I was. We're not amused, you know, and it is, it's good.
Can you grab the bill and send it out to us, how that money's supposed to be structured anyway, so that we all read it?
Yeah, 'cause, you know, I, I met, I sat down with it a couple of years ago.
How long has it been, about five miles, I remember Cox time, four, four miles?
So you.
Yeah, I know, I, I've been up that road in the evening.
And it's very active, I mean, uh, Cullman Lake is, is one of our hot tourist locations.
Alright, all minds clear? I'd like to know if you're good.
I'm pretty agree, you know, I'm, I'm, it's, um, good.
All in favor, I'm gonna read your character. Oh, y'all, I, I'll, I'll, I'll say that.
Aye.
We adjourn, we can stand in there.